Temple Terrace, it's go time. Our 50th Annual Fourth of July Parade is happening on July 4th at 10:00 a.m. There'll be golf carts, marching bands, and everything patriotic. Make sure to bring your lawn chairs, sunscreen, and...did I miss anything else, Kevin?
I mean, just the entire nighttime celebration, which will happen here on the first fairway at 6:00 p.m. Come out for live music, food trucks, and plenty of space to chill out before the 9:15 fireworks show, weather permitting, of course.
See you on the fourth, Temple Terrace.
Let's make it a blast.
Do order?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Okay, so that's it?
Mm-hmm.
I was moving on.
Gotta say it louder, they can't hear.
I call this meeting to order.
Very good, thank you so much. And if you would please stand and...oh, tell them to keep their cellphones quiet.
Keep your cellphones quiet.
Good. Thank you, good job. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we ask your blessings upon our meeting tonight. Grant us wisdom to make decisions that promote the common good of all in our amazing city. We pray in a special way for Tampa City Councilmember Gwen Henderson and her family as they grieve her recent passing. Provide them with comfort and surround them with your love. We humbly ask these things with gratitude for your many blessings. Amen. Stay for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good job, Mia. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. So, for those of you who don't come to our meetings often, we began a tradition a year or two ago where we start our meetings with a fun or interesting fact concerning our city or the city or the region. Sometimes it's funner than others, more fun, I guess. So I alluded to this in a past meeting where, right after our city was founded in 1925, there was an effort by the city of Tampa to, and successfully passed through the legislature before 1925 was over. We annexed in May, and the Florida Legislature voted to approve Tampa's annexation of Temple Terrace before 1925 was even over. And so, I read about that, and I've mentioned this before, but I didn't know many details about it, and I found some more details on that, so I'll bore you to death with some of the details. And so, lot going on in 1925. And for those of you who are from the area, you probably already know, this has a Temple Terrace connection. You know that Tampa used to be the city of Tampa on the east side of the Hillsborough River, and then on the west side of the Hillsborough River was the city of West Tampa. I don't know if everybody knew that or not, but there used to be two cities, Tampa and West Tampa. The west side of the river, where University of Tampa is, was actually its own city called West Tampa. It was incorporated in 1895 and was a city for 30 years, up until 1925. And it was equal in population, almost exactly equal in size as the city of Tampa. So there were these two cities that were almost equal in size, on both sides of the river. From 1895, from the very beginning, Tampa kept trying to persuade West Tampa to merge and become one city because they said, you know, we'd have more buying power, we could accomplish more together, you know, those kinds of things. But West Tampa was always skeptical of that and would never go along with that. Well, in 1924, Tampa eventually prevailed and West Tampa said, you know what, it's probably using our best interest, let's merge. So they voluntarily merged with the city of Tampa in 1924. And with that annexation became effective at the stroke of midnight on New Year's Eve, 1924, turning into 1925. So now Tampa was one city, and overnight it doubled in population, almost exactly, from 51,000 people to 102,000 people, because there were two cities of both 51,000 people. So Tampa, January 1st, 1925, instantly became the third largest city in Florida. In those days, it was Jacksonville, followed by Miami, and then just barely followed by Tampa. It was just almost, they were just barely less than Tampa. So Tampa, that happened in January 1925. In May 1925, Temple Terrace is incorporated. Wow, we got this, we're our own city. By the end of 1925, Tampa had petitioned the legislature to annex not only Temple Terrace, but Port Tampa, Sulfur Springs, and Beach Park also. So those four Temple Terrace, Port Tampa, Beach Park, would have added 30,000 people to the city of Tampa, which would have put them far above Jacksonville and by far the most populous city in the state of Florida. So they got overzealous because of their success in merging with West Tampa, but they shortcut stuff in trying to do this so quickly. They shortcut the annexation process and some of the legal steps. And so, this annexation passed the Florida Legislature and was supposed to take effect January 1st of 1927. So, some of these communities, including Temple Terrace, balked at this and filed suit because Tampa was doing a hostile takeover of these areas. The suit, the circuit judge found in favor of the plaintiffs, Temple Terrace and the others, in fact, it was Judge Francis Marion Robles, whose father, as Robles Park is named after his father, right? So the judge ruled in favor of us, the plaintiffs, and said that Tampa did not follow the legal annexation process, right? So the annexation didn't happen. Now, all those other areas were eventually annexed after World War II, as Sulfur Springs, Beach Park, they're all Port Tampa, they're all in Tampa now. In fact, after World War II, they went even further, Rocky Point, Sulfur Springs, Palmasia, a lot of areas that are now in Tampa became in Tampa after World War II. So, what's the Temple Terrace...well, there is some Temple Terrace connection, but interestingly, the golf course here in Temple Terrace was sold to the city of Temple Terrace in July of 1926 by Temple Terrace Estates Incorporated. They didn't give it to us, contrary to what a lot of us thought, they actually sold it to us for $10. They basically gave it to us. They sold it to us for $10. We still have the 1926 deed from July of 26, where most of the deed is encumbered by legal descriptions of the properties, because that goes on for pages and pages, because the golf course meanders all over, right? What's interesting about this is it has to remain, as most of us know, a golf course or a city park or some type of public recreation, green space, in perpetuity, or it reverts back to the heirs or descendants of Temple Terrace, Inc., whoever that might be, I don't know. But what's interesting is, that didn't make any sense if you don't know the backstory, is there's a whole section at the end that talks about if Temple Terrace becomes part of the city of Tampa in January of 1927, this provision and all these requirements apply to the city of Tampa as well. And the only reason that that's in the deed is when that deed was transferred, we were on track to become part of Tampa in January. And so, when you read the deed, if you don't know the backstory, you're like, why would they have put that in there? That's why they put that in there. Anyhow, Tampa was unsuccessful in their hostile takeover. They did get Sulfur Springs, but that's okay, they did not get Temple Terrace. And to my knowledge, according to Mayor Castor, they don't want it anymore, so I think we're safe. So, anyway, that's the fun fact. We have a bonus fun fact, and you might have noticed that I have an assistant today, and actually she's not an assistant, she's mayor for the day, right? And so, this is Mia Rodriguez, and Mia and I have spent the afternoon together touring the different departments of the city. We've been to Public Works, and the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and where else did we went to?
Oh...
We went to the rec center, right?
Okay.
Yeah, and we went to Mr. B. his office, right? So you met a lot of our employees today. They're all, I think they're bigger fans of you than they are of mine, right? Somebody, and I won't tell you who, was asking her for a raise. I think they had better chances with her than they had with us. So, this is Mia, and she's from Corpus Christi Elementary School here in Temple Terrace. And just so you know what we do, every year for their fundraising gala, the fire chief and the police chief and the mayor, we donate chief for a day or mayor for a day as a fundraiser for their silent auction. And so, it's fun for us and profitable for them, and Mia says she's gonna be mayor one day, so some of you may be around for that, so, good. So we have a proclamation for Mia, and says, whereas in support of the Corpus Christi Catholic School Gala event this past March, the city of Temple Terrace donated the opportunity for a student to serve as honorary mayor for a day. Mia Rodriguez was given the opportunity by her parents, or who are here. Mayor Andy Ross agreed to share his authority as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace with Ms. Rodriguez on a temporary basis. This is only temporary, right? On June 17th, Ms. Rodriguez has completed a survey of the city, learned about our style of government, interviewed directors, and gained knowledge of their duties, and enjoyed a pizza party with elected officials and staff. Now therefore, I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim Mia Rodriguez as honorary mayor for a day. Would you like to say a few words?
No.
No? You weren't shy all day.
Good political instincts.
Yeah, very good. So thank you for being with us today. Here's your proclamation. And you wanna get a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's give her a round of applause. Take that with you. We're gonna go this way. Yep, we're gonna go down the steps near your parents. How about we get a picture first without them, and then we'll have your parents up there.
Go right to the middle?
You stand there, right over here, there you go, and I'll stand here.
All right, three, two, one. Perfect.
How about we get your moment?
Okay. Okay, three, two, one. All right, thank you.
Thank you, good to see you. Nice to see you, finally. Good to see you. They left too soon, as I was gonna tell you, as you can tell, he worked, her dad works for county fire, and without any prompting today, when we're at the fire station, she asked her mom why her dad's fire truck is green, how come it's not red like Temple Terrace? So, I don't know. Next, we have employee of the month, Mr. Joe Ferris. Would you please come up to the podium? How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good. So, Joe Ferris, most of you know him if you live in Temple Terrace. Joe's been a dedicated city employee for the past eight years and an integral member of the Community Development Department. Joe takes pride in the city's status as a Tree City USA and is passionate when it comes to protecting the tree canopy. He's a wealth of knowledge regarding not only arboriculture, but landscape and landscape design. He is always willing to go above and beyond for residents and staff members. Prior to being the city arborist, Joe was a permit technician and then a permit coordinator. He excels at training new staff because of the knowledge he gained from being in both positions. Along with his expertise, he also has an abundance of patience, which is greatly appreciated amongst his fellow employees. Joe works diligently, especially since the hurricanes, to replace what trees were lost and to give away as many as he can to residents for planning purposes. He's given away over 500 trees so far this year alone, and around 3,000 trees since becoming a city arborist. The Community Development Department would describe him as loyal, honest, kind, resilient, disciplined, and best of all, quick-witted. I'd go along with that. Congratulations to Joe for being amazed employee of the month, and I have to tell you that we changed the way we select the employee of the month not long ago, and these are all peer-selected every month. And so, it's not the supervisors that select the employees of the month, it's just employees themselves that vote. And so, that's really a tremendous honor, so, particularly with the caliber of employees that you work with. So congratulations, Joe. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, I appreciate it. It does mean a lot, especially when it's coming from your own colleagues and the people that you work with every day. My only question after reading or hearing all that, which was really nice, you got the right Joe? There are other Joes in the city, I just wanna make sure we have the right one.
We have the right one, so...
No, I appreciate it, thank you, it means a lot.
Thank you, and thanks for all you do.
All right, three, two, one. Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation from our friends from HART, the Hillsborough Area Regional Transit Annual Budget Presentation. We have the interim CFO, Loretta Kirk is here, and Director of Budgets and Grants, Melanie Williams, and the Executive Director, Scott Drainville. Welcome, Mr. Drainville.
Good evening, Mayor Ross and council members. So, for the record, Scott Drainville, Chief Executive Officer for HART. Again, joining me today is Ms. Loretta Kirk. And Melanie Williams, our Budgets Director, she'll be doing the presentation tonight. On behalf of the Hillsborough Transit Authority, better known as HART, and a request from Vice Mayor Shissa to share a brief introduction for our preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2026. We believe that connecting with the cities we serve, like Temple Terrace, is essential to building a more responsive and inclusive transit system. Temple Terrace plays a significant role in HART's network. Four routes directly serve this area, including two of our five highest ridership routes, Route 6 along 50 Strick Street and the Route 39 along Bush Boulevard. These corridors connect residents and workers to key destinations like the University of South Florida, Net Park, and the Amazon facility right here in Temple Terrace. So in fact, over 20% of the weekday ridership on these routes happen within your city limits. That's a clear signal of how important Temple Terrace is, not just as a transit destination, but as a daily origin point of thousands of riders who depend on our service to work, school, and medical care. So at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Williams to come up and present HART's preliminary fiscal 2026 budget.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Williams, Director of Budgets and Grants at HART, and today I will present the FY26 Proposed Operating Budget, Proposed Capital Budget, and Five-Year Capital Plan for HART. Oh, is this the clicker?
On the side, there's a little turn on and off, just make sure it's on.
Okay.
And then left and right, when you point it there, just make sure it's on.
Okay, included in the presentation today, we're gonna discuss the FY26 Budget Calendar, the Budget Legislative from HART Charter, the Budget Assumptions for Revenue, the projected service, the Budget Assumptions for Expenses, and the Proposed Operating Budget. Then we would discuss the Five-Year Capital Plan, the FY26 Capital Budget, then the Fund Reserves. Here is a slide summarizing the committee and the board meetings scheduled for consideration for the FY26 Budget. On June 2nd, the HART Board approved the Proposed Operating Budget, Capital Budget, and Capital Plan. And then on July 21st, the Board will approve action on the Proposed Military Rate, the Rollback Rate, and the date of the public hearing. In August, we have two presentations. August 4th, presentation to the Board, we'll be giving for the Update Budget Presentation focusing on the Service Plan. Then on August 18th, we have the Presentation to the Finance and Audit Committee, and that's focused on the Capital Budget and Capital Plan. And then finally, in September, we have two public hearings. The first one on September 8th, the first public hearing, and this is where the Board adopts a tentative military and a tentative budget. And then in September 22nd, the final public hearing, the Board adopts the final military and final budget. The next three slides are inserts from the HART's Charter. This states, "The Proposed Operating and Capital Budget should be submitted to the Board of Directors on and before June 15th of each year." So this slide, Section 4 Member Approval, states that HART is required to submit and approve proposed budget to the members of HART that includes the city of Temple Terrace, Hillsborough County, and the city of Tampa, on and before July 1st of each year. And this slide here, Section 5 Budget Hearing, states that HART is required to present the proposed budget to the Board for approval in a public hearing. Before I get into the details of the budget, this is a budget summary of the FY26 Proposed Budget. So FY26, there is an overall increase of 7% from FY25. The Proposed Revenues, the Avalon is a 5% increase. Then we have the Proposed Expenses, Operation Contract Services, an increase of 26%. The Fringe Benefit and Healthcare, increase of 9%. Parts and Supplies, increase of 9%. Then we have the Fuel and Oil, decrease of 8%, and Administrative Other, a decrease of 11%. This is the Proposed FY26 Budget. Operating Budget is $125,221,631. Then we have the Proposed Capital Budget at $74,463,155, with a total Proposed FY26 Budget of $199,684,786. The next few slides, I will discuss the Budget Assumptions for the Revenues. The Avalon Tax Revenue is based on the Proposed Military Rate of .5 mils. It is estimated that $85,897,138 of revenues. By statute, HART can only budget at 95% of the revenues, so therefore, the budget assumption is $81,602,281, and this represents a 3.8 million or a 5% increase over FY25. There are no funds budgeted to transfer to capital for FY26. This slide shows the historical and proposed Avalon revenue for the last 10 years. Here you'll see that Avalon taxes to be levied, the budgeted Avalon at 95%, the Avalon that was collected, and then the change from prior year to year with the percentage. Next is the Budget Assumptions for Grants. We have federal operating grants at $21,816,708. Then we have the state operating grants at $7,963,611. We have the Fair Pass Revenue at $9,720,864. Then we have the local contributions at $2,491,250. Advertising Income, $1,500,000. With other income, $251,823. With a Tampa Historical Street Car at $2,484,624. And then interest income at $1,466,320. There are no funds budgeted to be transferred to the Operating Reserves in FY26. And then we have a fund balance transfer to capital of $4,75,850, and this amount is used to fund capital projects or a match, the local match for the capital projects. Next, we have the FY26 Proposed Services for All Modes. The total revenue miles is $10,208,934. Then we have the total hours at $800,100. The total ridership, $13,212,400 for ridership. Next, we have the Budget Assumptions for Expenses. Salaries and Wages at $58,353,553. Then we have the Fringe Benefits at $14,785,081. Healthcare, $14,4,853. Then we have the Operation Contract Services at $12,743,504. Parts and Supplies at $6,790,035. Then we have the Fuel at $4,770,857, and then you see the projected cost there. And then, you see the projected cost there. Have Administrative Other at $3,520,514. Administrative Contract Services at $2,111,608. And you see the descriptions underneath. We have Legal Services at $595,750. Utilities, $1,376,008. Marketing and Printing at $527,737. And then, we have Taxes and Fees at $605,034. So, the next two slides summarizes the Operating Budget and includes the plan for FY27 and '28. This is a balanced budget. So, the Budget for Total Revenues is $125,221,631. And here's all the expenses. And again, this is a balanced budget. So, the expenses are $125,221,631. So, the HART Board Policy requires a minimum of a 90-day reserve for operating expenses. So, based on the Proposed Operating Budget at $125,21, the operating required reserves is $30,876,657. And then, we have the projected balance as of October 1st, 2025, at $39,439,546. So, this is the schedule of all the reserves. And currently, we have a total of $48.7 million. And then, we have the projected for the beginning of the fiscal year, October 1st, 2025. And then, we have the projected at the end of the fiscal year at 9:30, 2026. So, this is the Proposed Five-Year Capital Plan, which totals $326,974,611. The first year of the Capital Plan is the Capital Budget. So, the Capital Budget is $74,463,155. As stated, this is... As stated, as the first year of the Capital Plan is the Capital Budget. So, here, you'll see the revenue sources. And then, you have the project categories. And this is a balanced budget. So, the Proposed Capital Budget is $74,463,156. And then, you have the project categories below. And included in your packet is a list of those FY26 Capital Projects for the project categories. And this goes over the Capital Budget in detail. For time's sake, I'm not going to go over each project, but they are included in your packet. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Prior to opening it up for council questions, I just want to clarify what it is that... Is there anything being asked of us here? Are we just getting this for informational purposes?
No, it's not informational.
Yeah, strictly informational. No assets.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you very much. So, council members, are there questions?
I could add a comment to that. Vice Mayor Schissler. Yes, this is theoretically required by the Charter that this be presented to each member of the governing body, the City of Temple Terrace, as she stated, the City of Tampa and Hillsborough County, every year before July 1st. So, that's the basis for the presentation.
Mr. Drainville, do we have any part in the Proposed Millage Increase? Does Temple Terrace have any part in this at all?
Yeah, so, as the Board did approve to amend the Charter, to raise the .5 milage up to 1 mil. So, we will be coming back to Temple Terrace with a presentation. It's still in progress, and we're hoping to get maybe before August. But yes, we will be coming back to do a presentation for the Charter Amendment.
Okay, is that just again... Will that be for information purposes only?
No, so, from the Charter, each governing body has to vote and approve. So, if we come back to Temple Terrace, Temple Terrace, I would have to approve the Charter Amendment to raise that milage. If it does pass here, we would go to the City of Tampa, and then, finally, the County of Hillsborough. So, each governing body has to approve it for it to pass. So, if it comes to here and it fails here, then it's pretty much dead right there.
Okay, but that's not what's happening here?
No, no, no. So, we just want to, just like Director Schissler said, is we want to just present the budget. And I know we haven't done it in a while. So, I wanted to kind of get out in front of all the governing bodies just to have some knowledge of our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Drainville. Councilmember Fernandez.
So, can you, since you are a taxing authority, can you explain the process and parameters for establishing the milage?
So, again, we have three legislative governing bodies. For us to... The first step would go to the HART Board. So, the HART Board did approve that...
I'm not talking about the increase that we just... I'm talking about the establishing the milage for your budget.
Oh, so you mean what we would raise the rate to?
No, I'm saying at each year, when you're creating your budget, you establish what your anticipated milage rate is going to be. And I just wanted you to see if you can explain your... For the City of Temple Terrace, we have a rollback rate. We have different rates that we are allowed to use without an overwhelming majority approval or whatever. So, I just wanted to see if you could explain the process and the parameters that HART uses to establish the milage rate that you're going to base your budget on.
Yeah, so normally, behind the June, we would get something from the taxing authority, what the actual Avalon increase would be. So, we are very conservative. Looking at the county budgets, they're looking around 6%. I asked them to be more conservative, so we're doing a proposed budget on 5%. So, anything more than 5% would be, of course, great for us. But then, we do budget under 95%. And that's how we count. And we're going to wait until, as soon as we get that official from the taxing authority, then we'll reestablish the budget and go on whatever the actual number is.
Okay, so, when you're creating this budget, you've got... When we talk about the 5% increase, we're talking, at this budget right now, we're not talking about an increase in the milage rate that has been established in past years. We're talking about an increase in the value of property that's resulting in an increase of or an anticipated increase in revenue.
That's correct.
Okay, so, I also would like to know if the... HART is eligible to receive any CIT funds, the Community Investment Tax?
So, in the past, HART has received CIT funds and from the General Fund to work on in Nebraska Carter. We... HART didn't have the opportunity to go and present to the county to specifically have any of those... Receive any of those funds. But I can say, in the past, yes, HART has received CIT funds.
So, would this be a situation where... So, for example, the City of Temple Terrace, we share in a portion of the CIT funds. We don't have to go request them from the county. We have an agreement of how they'll be distributed. So, would HART... If you didn't request it for this past year or this upcoming budget, does that mean that HART cannot receive any CIT funds? Or is it something that at any time during the fiscal year, you can go to the county commissioners and request some sort of capital funding?
That's a great question. And I'm actually going to meet with the County Administrator Bonnie Wise in the upcoming weeks to discuss that. But I believe we can, we could at some time, go in front of the County Commission and request some funds from the CIT.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Kravitz.
Just one quick question. I was poking around on the HART website earlier, and I spotted the Goal section. And the first goal was be financially sustainable. I was just wondering, from the perspective of HART, what does that mean for HART?
So, financially sustainable would mean a revenue source that... So, when I took over, we were on the fiscal cliff. And there's many, many efficiencies I made from cutting down the executive suite to really looking at all the efficiencies we made. So, we definitely were not on the fiscal cliff. But when I say that, we have to remain status quo. So, when you look at our service levels, pre-COVID, we had 45 buses, more on the road with more service. So, when COVID came, we had to readjust. We kind of run a modified Saturday service. And when I say that, we run a peak service of about 101 vehicles. So, pre-COVID, we had about 135. So, to be financially sustainable, we would need that revenue. Because our biggest issue is the backlog of state of good repair. So, as you can see, the revenues are very small, and we can't keep up with the capital. So, if we did get any additional funding, we would have to build that baseline back up where every... You know, we should be replacing buses, about 16 buses every year. So, we would have to replace the resources that are passed through and then purchase, say, you know, the amount of buses that we need to add in the service. So, it would be a process, what we need to do if we ever receive that additional funding. But to say, to be sustainable, we would definitely need additional funding for operating.
As a follow-up to that, I noticed in the presentation, I think about 9% of the revenue comes from user fees. I was noticing in your presentation that about 9% of the revenue comes from user fees. So, I'm assuming when you say revenue neutral, it doesn't matter where that revenue source comes from to meet that goal, as long as you have enough revenue to operate, you consider that sustainable, correct?
Correct. And when you say user fees, you mean like Fairbox Recovery?
Yes, sir, tickets, et cetera.
And that's a very, very small amount of revenue that we get from Fairbox Recovery.
So, no other questions.
Okay. Mr. Drainville, thank you very much for coming. And Ms. Williams, good presentation. Ms. Kirk, thank you for joining us. So, our next item, board council members, is a Board Appointment to the School Support Committee. There's a regular... One regular member vacancy on the School Support Committee. We received one application from Megan Macklemore. I don't know if Ms. Macklemore is here tonight. If you are...
No.
No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve Megan Macklemore for the vacancy of the School Support Committee.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion of the motion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. She's appointed to the School Support Committee for a term extending from June 17th, 2025, until June 17th, 2028. Next is Appointment to the Board of Adjustment. There's one regular member vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. We received one application from Amber Treat. I don't see Ms. Treat here tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve Amber Treat to the Board of Adjustment for the term of June 17th, 2025, to June 17th, 2027.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion of the motion. Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Ms. Treat is appointed. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of our meeting from June 3rd? And if so, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. The minutes are adopted. Next is persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. There are forms in the back of the room for people who would like to address the council. There is a three-minute time limit imposed on all speakers. And we do ask that you approach the podium when you're called and begin by please stating your name and city of residence. Our first request is from Tamara Heine. Did I get that right? I could... Okay, very good. Welcome, ma'am. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Very nice to see you today. I wanted to use this three minutes basically to express my support for the Adopt a Tree program, specifically in looking at what can be done with the golf course. I don't necessarily know all of the pros and cons for it, but in theory, it sounds like a very sound idea where we certainly have money available in the funds and trees available to provide the golf course. And they would be able to do the irrigation and plan out where the trees would go themselves. So, having moved to Temple Terrace two years ago, my husband and I first came here for the trees, and secondly, for the golf course. So, you can see where our interests lies in a program like this. That's really all I had to express, but I appreciate you listening and look forward to hearing some feedback on the potential program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Temple Terrace. Next is Matthew Ferguson. Good evening, Mr. Ferguson.
Good evening, sir, Mayor, Council. Again, my name is Matthew Ferguson. I am a private citizen here in Temple Terrace. I live at 403 Druid Hills Road. Very similar to the previous speaker, we were very recently encouraged to hear about the... Through the grapevine, about this initiative by the city to install more mature trees along the golf course, roadways, and, I hope, in parks via that Adopt a Tree Fund. Considering that Temple Terrace was, I think you said it earlier, Mayor, Tree City USA, what, 2008 timeframe, it was really heartbreaking to see the damage done by the recent hurricanes. It damaged many of the large trees, destroyed many of them. We ourselves lost four out of five of our oak trees. We've since replaced them with fruit trees, but it takes a long time to come to maturity. We'd love to see live oaks or flowering dogwoods, gumbo limbos, or even sycamore trees planted along through the city here. All native species, I think, along the roadways, the parks here in Temple Terrace. So, we'd like to go on record, my wife and I in support of this initiative. More trees thoughtfully placed around here would be a win for Temple Terrace and a blessing for future generations. And subject to any questions, thank you for the time and opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Next is Nick Perko. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nick Perko, Temple Terrace, Florida. We had a great director that came up and spoke to you about the sewer pipe under Fowler Avenue and said, before he left and went to a better job, he said it should be done by April 15th. I know there's been major problems. I know there's been a sewer that leaked that went into the rain tree area. I know there has been boil notices over in that area, I believe because of this. I know there's... They dug out a lot. I just want to make sure that this contractor is going to be able to stick to the timeline that he was set. Because April 15th, and it's already June 15th, you know, two months, and he's still... It don't look like he's done anything except tear up more stuff with that. I did have one other thing. It was brought up in the last meeting about the building that you all approved on Fowler Avenue, about putting some reflective glass on it. It still hasn't been done. I know they came up last meeting, and they wanted windows. Those windows are already in there, you know? So, I don't know if this... Whoever is going to be running this is actually going to do that. Because they're already starting to build the inside. They're putting up walls, and they've got advertisements. And that still hasn't been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perko. Mr. Warren Phillips, could you talk with Mr. Perko at some point, give him some feedback on the sewer line, let him know what's going on? Please, thank you. Okay, that's all the requests I have to speak at this time. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Move to first Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Consent Agenda is adopted. Okay, public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. City Attorney, I think you have some information for us?
I do. There is a proposed resolution that was not on the agenda. The supporting documents were not quite ready to... In time to make the publication. So, I'd like to suggest that council consider adding this item concerning a construction contract with Sun Civil LLC to this evening's agenda, and that such be done by motion.
Okay, council, is there a motion to add this item to the agenda?
Move to add... Move to add the Sun City contract to the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Normally, I would suggest we put an added item at the end, but since Mr. Perko just talked about this and this discussion may shed some light on this for him and others who may be watching, I would suggest we do this now if we're ready. Mr. B., is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Give me just one second. I'm not quite prepared, but I'll get there. Get my glasses on. Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the city attorney mentioned, the addition to the agenda is a resolution of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida approving the award of a contract with Sun Civil LLC for the emergency gravity sewer pipe construction under East Fowler Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute said contract, approving payment in the amount of $1,362,557.64 from account 450-1931-535.63-34. So, Mr. Perko's timing is actually quite good, so this is reference to the Fowler project. So as the council and the community, I believe, is aware, for several months, after Hurricane Milton happened, we had a sanitary sewer connection across this under Fowler Avenue that collapsed during the hurricane. The goal was to secure a contractor at the time for emergency work. The plan that was approved and encouraged at the time was to go to Jack and Boar under Fowler Avenue across the road. That was going to be very complicated work to begin with. There was high-pressure gas lines, sanitary sewer lines, potable water lines, et cetera. But the understanding was that it would be done in a timely fashion. While that plan has not obviously worked, has not been successful by any stretch, as Mr. Perko alluded to, we've had several incidents where we've had sanitary sewer, a sanitary sewer line that was undermined, a potable water line that was undermined, and we've had other issues that have come up in the last month or so particularly. Further complicating this matter is the fact that the FDOT, who owns Fowler Avenue, it's their roadway, they have an existing program to repave Fowler, and they want to get going on that project as soon as possible. So they've given us until the end of June to be done with this project in essence, be out of their travelway. So in light of all these circumstances, we obviously consider this an ongoing emergency, and this timing is now actually pressed our schedule even more so. So the contract that's before you today is to retain the firm, the construction firm of Sun Civil LLC. Sun Civil LLC is an FDOT-approved contractor. They're currently on the Fowler Avenue improvement project, working for the state, and they will be, if approved tonight, they would be proposing to open cut across Fowler, so we're no longer going under. We're going to open cut across Fowler, and that work would happen as early as this Friday. It would start this Friday evening. We have gotten assurance from the district secretary of the FDOT that we would be allowed to do that. That would start Friday evening, and that would run basically continuously all the way through early Monday morning, and it would be the weekend of the twentieth, and then the following weekend, there'd be another continuation of that work. This would not involve a full closure of Fowler Avenue, however, it would involve reconfiguration of the lane. Sometimes the eastbound lane would travel over into the westbound lane and things like that you would typically see on a major state contract. The contract before you includes a performance bond as well as stipulates that the work needs to be done by June thirtieth and provides for damages if that deadline is not met. I want to be clear that this contract is only to install the casing and the pipe that go across and under Fowler Avenue, the travelway. Once that work is done, there will still be some remaining work on the outside of the travelway to install manholes and service connections, and that work will take a little bit more time. But this is the critical piece, this is the part that has really held up this project, is getting across this major state highway. So we feel reasonably confident in this process. This is a firm that has worked for us in the past and has been very successful for us, and obviously has good reference from the state also. Would ask for your approval and happy to stand for any questions. I also have Public Works Director Warrenfields here, who's been more intimately involved with this project than I have.
Thank you, Mr. B. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I have a few questions. So one would be, this contractor is familiar to the DOT, and that's part of why we have selected them for this step, but why didn't we choose this contractor from the beginning?
So when this collapse occurred, we basically had to respond, and at the time, Mr. Tinch, that was in charge of utilities, went with the county's emergency contractor, basically piggybacked off their contract, and we needed to get somebody who was available to do the work. I would imagine that the company that we've been using was somebody who had the means and capacity to do it at that time. I'm not sure if Sun Civil was considered, and it may be that they had other projects ongoing.
Okay, so we've been trying to do the project without disturbing the roadway, so that required drilling under the road. This, this contract is only to basically cut open the road, put the pipe in, and walk away from that. Who's finishing all of the connections and the work that's on the sides?
So right now, as of today, our intention is that the existing contractor, Southern States, will continue that work and finish that work out. So as you recall, some of the concerns we've had have been more directly in reference to the subcontractor, the drilling subcontractor, in terms of performance. Southern States is the general contractor, the prime on this job. So the work on the side of the road, the manholes, things like that, would be up to Southern States and not the drilling contractor any longer. So our goal at this moment is to work with the existing contractor to finish that out. Obviously, there's a lot going on here, so we're going to have some conversations. If that changes, I'll bring that back to your attention, but at this moment, that is our purpose here and our target.
Okay, so, one, is that going to change the contract that we already have established with them? Because this seems like it's going to be a change in scope. And two, are they, is this contractor able to address some of the situations that have come up because of the storm sewer, sewer lines breaking in unexpected ways? So we have the EPA or EPC and, you know, different items to address that weren't part of the original project to begin with. We didn't expect those breaks, and now we have a change in scope as well. So how is that actually going to roll through with the money that we approved for the contract and the contract we established?
So that's actually something, Mr. Warrenfields actually has a meeting coming up in the next couple of days with the current contractor. We've been talking to our legal department about that as well, trying to come up to an understanding, if you will, of what this is going to mean for the existing contract. We don't have that issue resolved just yet, because honestly, we just haven't had the time. We've been working, trying to get this thing solved and trying to get somebody who can do the open cut piece in a timely fashion. So we understand it has to be clarified. I'll be reporting to council back once I have those answers. At this point, we know that we have to have those conversations, and we just haven't had that opportunity yet, but we will be going through that with them in the next two to three days.
Okay, I just have one more question regarding the subcontractor. And obviously, we have discussed this outside, but I want to make sure that people hear it, and that is that there are some of these issues that may have been, let's say, created by some issues with the subcontractor maybe not being on site or something, and you alluded to having some issues with the subcontractor. So what about any of this that has come out could possibly be due to the subcontractors? I don't want to use any kind of legal term, but subcontractors causing some of these issues? And what recourse would we have?
Well, as I've not hidden the fact that we've not been satisfied with the subcontractor's work, the sub has been, the performance has been inconsistent, has not only been inconsistent, but has caused us, in our estimation, has caused us some direct, you know, costs and issues with some of the breaks and things like that. We are and have been in conversation with the city attorney's office over the last several weeks particularly about how do we handle the situation moving forward. We are dealing with the Hillsborough County Environmental Protection Commission. They're sort of the arm of the Florida DEP when it comes to enforcement. We're dealing with them, which I think they would acknowledge that we've been as responsive as we can be in the last several weeks trying to address these issues. That is still, the matter of the sub and the matter of the general contractor, the existing ones, again, like I said, it's something we're going to have to deal with, and we're going to have to have the attorneys probably involved with that. I would hope that we can resolve this amicably. That would be our goal, but we haven't got to that point.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Kravitz?
I'm, I'm, just more of a comment.
Well, we're at questions now, but we'll get to...
I'll just, I'll ask the question then. Let me just orient myself. Would you be open to providing more regular updates on major capital projects in the future, just so things don't creep up on us quite like this?
I think I've always, and we spoke about this earlier today, I am open to providing capital. I mean, we have provided regular updates. There's probably been a dozen updates in the last several months about this project alone that I've provided to the entire council. But we can provide, we can look at providing these updates in a different format that might be more easier to digest, I guess, if you will. We'd be happy to look at that.
Not about ease of digestion. Okay, so, good. And when it comes to recovery against the contractor, I can see that they've made a number of errors in judgment, let's say, and I just want to prefix this, as always while I'm up here, I'm not talking about any legal things. This is just me and my opinion. So they began work without a permit, they didn't do flow monitoring, they didn't have inspection records on site, they continued dewatering after sewage contamination was discovered when they should have stopped. So it seems like if this is a responsible contractor and they have various credentials and certifications and approvals from the state, that they really ought to know better. And it seems like we're in a position now where we're having to spend a fair amount of money, where if they had performed better, we might not be in that situation right now. Do you see any merit to that?
I would agree. Had they performed better, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in right now, absolutely. And we've not, we've made that public and transparent throughout this whole process, that we've not been happy with their performance. Part of the challenge with the drilling subcontractor is that there's a very small universe of drilling subcontractors to begin with, and then the ones that are willing to take on a job under a state highway with lots of conflicts and things like that, the universe gets even smaller. So I think that was part of the challenge early on when they started the project.
Yeah. And, you know, even though we're spending a lot of money, I think we all have the same hope that we'll be able to recover hopefully a lot of that from the contractor, depending on what our attorneys say. And I have one final question. In the contract itself, I noticed that in clause two, there's a comment here that the work is to be completed during eleven consecutive calendar days. I think when we spoke earlier, and my memory may of course be faulty, it was mentioned that the work was going to be completed on two weekends. Is that a different situation than eleven calendar days? Because if I were signing this contract as the person responsible for performing the work, and I saw that I had eleven consecutive calendar days to do it, I might get a little irritated if I found out that I only had two days at a time on two different weekends, so a total of four days, which is less than half the time under the contract, and it's not consecutive.
So the contractor is very much aware that their only, their window of time are the weekends to get across the highway? The FDOT is not going to let them do work during, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there, would you like to clarify? The Public Works Director, clarify that.
Just probably other work.
Just to clarify the eleven consecutive days...
Jason, tell everybody who you are.
Sorry, Jason Warrenfield's Public Works Director. To clarify the eleven consecutive days, there is work that will occur outside of the actual construction windows. We start pending the approval tonight. We will start Thursday morning with a meeting, and then there will be MOT requirements that have to be set. So the eleven consecutive days does not just speak about the actual open cutting of the road, it's the prep work, and that's the follow-up when we're done.
May I address the follow-up directly? Sure. Is there a scope of work that says when each section is supposed to be completed? Because whenever a contract like this, you know, comes onto my table separately from city council work, immediately I go to the scope of work because that's critical. And so I'd just ask you if there is actually a provision in there that says you're doing this on the weekend, you can do the other stuff during the other days?
So there is a, well, the scope is really defined by the engineering drawings. So if you're referring to an actual verbatim list of activities and functions for day by day, there is not one of those. This was, this has been a quick turnaround from our engineering staff to the design, to the MOT. Even as I'm sitting here, I got the preliminary approval from FDOT to move forward with this. So this is, this is moving at a very high pace compared to any other project that we've done, but the scope of the work is really defined by the drawings and the understanding that we work from north to south on this to get it across the road as quickly as we can.
I do have one more question. When we approved this today, my understanding is we're authorizing this contract to now be executed, and so one would still be able to go to the contractor and refine certain points that might not be fully fleshed out at this phase, even if we vote in favor. So is there a plan to maybe, I understand it's moving quickly, high speed, high risk, right? So I'm just looking to see if we can maybe catch some of that by now approving this and then having your team or maybe the city manager's team go and negotiate some of these scope of work issues that are still open, so that we are sure that we're getting from the contractor the things that we need in the order that we need them in?
Absolutely. I mean, when I just read the email from FDOT, there are conditions on their approval that are contingent of the entire project. So as this is still evolving, I mean, the contract with the, the agreement with the contractor due to the work is really a light version of what we would normally have. So it continues to evolve as we work through the process. So yes, our goal, Public Works, their engineering, is to protect the city, the performance bond, the eleven-day work schedule. We're doing these things as much as we can to hold them accountable for the work that we expect them to perform in a tight timeframe.
Well, in that case, thank you very much to you and your team, and also please be careful.
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, is there a motion to approve the contract?
Move to approve the resolution with, for the City of Temple Terrace approving the award of a contract with Sun Civil LLC for the emergency gravity sewer pipe construction under East Fowler Avenue and authorizing the city manager to execute said contract, approving payment of the amount of $1,362,557.64 from account 450-1931-535.63-34.
Second. 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 Discussion. Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Got just like to say, city manager, Mr. Warrenfields, and your staffs, thank you for this. I know that this has caused nothing but angst since October. I've been following this project with you since October, and fingers crossed. Thank you for all your work on this. I know this has been a nightmare dealing with all the bureaucratic agencies and DOT and everything else, so thank you very much for everything. Next item is a resolution approving the school support committee's amendment to its mission statement and the list of eligible schools to apply for grant funding starting in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our school support committee chair, Christina Paul, is here and I believe is here to explain it.
My order, Mr. Mayor, I believe we skipped consent agenda, didn't we?
All right.
We did it.
Pardon me.
Good evening, Ms. Paul.
Good evening. All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Christina Paul, and I serve as the chair of the school support committee. First, I just want to say thank you for your ongoing support of this program and for giving me the chance to speak with you tonight. I also want to thank some of our other committee members who are in the audience tonight. If they could just give us a little wave, thank you. All right. So one of the important updates we would like to share is that we've taken the time to update the mission statement, something that hadn't been done since 2008. So with input from the committee and valuable insight from our longtime member, Mike Seagrist, we created a mission statement that better reflects the school support committee and the work we're responsible for. In short, our updated mission to empower teachers, support innovative, excuse me, support innovative instruction, and enrich the educational experience of students in Temple Terrace. In addition, tonight, we're also here to request your approval of an updated list of schools eligible to participate in the city's grant program. We want to make sure we're reaching students in the most effective way, and that starts with choosing the right schools. When we were reviewing the program, we realized there wasn't a clear set of criteria for schools to be qualified, so with the help of the city clerk's office, we connected with the Hillsborough County School District to help us identify Temple Terrace student, the schools that Temple Terrace students are currently enrolled in. From there, we applied two other guidelines. The school must be nonprofit, and it must be located within five miles of City Hall, so it stayed closely connected to our community. Additionally, we took a hard look at the... Additionally, we took a hard look at the grant process itself. After the last cycle, we reviewed feedback from the schools and noticed some common challenges. In response, we've updated the application to make it more user-friendly and easier to understand. Our hope is to remove confusion, make expectations clear, and support an effective process. So, with your approval, these updates would go into effect for the fall 2025-2026 grant cycle. In the past, we've typically shared the application in September after the school year was already underway. Moving forward, we'll be releasing it in August, right after our first committee meeting. That way, schools have more time to plan, and we can invite educators to our September meeting to answer any questions and offer any guidance. We believe this small change will go a long way in improving communication, increasing participation, and strengthening the entire program. So, thank you again for your time, your support, and believing in the impact of this work.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? See none. Council members' questions? Well, okay. Councilmember Fernandez?
So, this really might be a question for city staff, and that is, in the past, the grants may or may not be funded in the city budget. So, if we have a grant release date of August, you could potentially be putting grants out there, and then something could happen to the budget that maybe for some reason there are no grants in there. Would that be an issue, or would we basically have an established budget so that we would know this by the time the grant applications are released?
So, if I understand correctly, if the grant release date is in August, you would be working off the current fiscal year, which you'd budgeted in the prior year for this year. Is that correct?
So, okay. So, if the grants were... Applications are put out in August when school starts, we would know, because we're talking, in this case, it would be the fiscal year '25 budget, that would actually have the awards that would be issued, not out of the '26 budget. We would encumber the '25 budget and move that forward, because they are not going to be awarded potentially until August, October 1st.
Actually, I could...
I don't think so.
Yeah.
We've already spent the '25 budget. This would be the '26 budget.
That's what I'm thinking. It's the '26 budget.
I have a comment on that.
In our school support committee, I told the committee members about our budget process and that preliminary, we would know at that time. But until the second gavel hits in the second public hearing, nothing's ever set in stone. So, I don't know how we're going to do that, other than by that time, there'll be an anticipated budget.
But this isn't any different than...
No.
No.
This has always been the case.
Normally, the applications have gone out later in the year, closer to the actual final budget establishment.
Beginning of September, when we still don't have the budget. So, it's really not that much different than...
Okay. So, that was just a question that... But I do have a comment, so I don't...
Well, questions, right.
Yeah. All right. So, one more question then. And that is, normally, the school support committee has established what schools they're going to support through that committee. If we approve this tonight, and we say, okay, these are the schools, there would be councils saying, these are the schools that the committee is going to support. But then what happens into the future, because our students move around, or maybe there's a difference, you know, our students are assigned to a different school, so they want to change the schools they're supporting, would they need to come back to council?
I don't know the answer to that.
Again, so when this process started, when was the... I forgot the date. When was the last time the schools where this list was approved?
The most recent was 2017.
Okay. And the last time it was done by council resolution. So, when we were talking about this, again, I sought advice that the list would be approved by council resolution again. So, I would expect that if there's any changes to any of the parameters... Again, what they did was they got hold of the Hillsborough County School System that provided a list of actual Temple Terrace students that go there. So, we're not funding, we're not even requesting a school to be on the list that doesn't have students going there. That wasn't in the case. There were other schools that used to be on that list that had no students. So, anyway, we've done that. So, I would expect that it comes back before council.
And that's all I was asking, is what the process would be. I didn't want to lock the committee into schools because that changes frequently, and that's why you have a list now, or you had a list where there weren't any students attending, but there had been in the past. So, that's... So, that was my question.
One of the schools that used to be included that isn't included anymore was, for example, Armwood High School.
Yeah. Because we used to have students assigned there.
I think historic, that's when it was... The way it was done, the last time this was done, of course, as council, we can change that if we want to give them power to change it every year.
No, I just wanted to ask.
Let's get the questions out. Are there all your questions, councilmember? Questions?
No.
No? Questions?
We'll say that's exactly what I was just thinking, but...
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Paul.
Thank you.
I do have a comment.
Okay.
So, I was active on the school support committee in years past, and I am very passionate about education issues in the City of Temple Terrace. And my only concern about the update to the mission statement is that it reads very grant-forward. And the original goal of this committee, which I think was a very important goal, and that was to establish a direct communication with the school district.
Okay.
And it was not... The grants came along secondarily as something that the City of Temple Terrace could do to show the school district that we are... That education is important to the city, and that we are doing our part. We want you to meet us halfway and do your part. So, I am personally not in favor of stating, having a mission statement that is so grant predominant. That's it.
This is supposed to be our discussion, not council.
Well, okay. So, that's where I am. I don't... That's my concern with it.
Okay. Ms. Paul, thank you. Okay. So, is there a motion to approve, and then we can have discussion about the motion?
Okay. Motion to approve the resolution approving the school support committee's amendment to its mission statement and the list of eligible schools to apply for grant funding starting in the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. We won't hear councilmember Fernandez's comments, so we'll go from there. Vice Mayor?
My comment to that is, I kind of sort of agree with what you're saying about the grant orientation. However, having been one of the charter members of the school support committee, or back then it was a school improvement task force, and having been the one that actually developed the grant program back in 1997, I agree a little bit. I don't want to... It shouldn't be so focused on the grant process and the grant writing. But there's always so much that this group can do with the district. The district is too big, and they never have, they never will. They pay lip service, and that's about it. You're not going to get the buy-in that we've always hoped we would get. And I know that I've sat... I was the liaison for four years, and I know the efforts that put into this. The grants, however, properly funded, and there was a point where the grants were down to like $7,500. In one year, we didn't even award a single grant to a school. We used it for something else. But the amount of money that we're doing, I truly believe, has an impact, it has an effect on the schools. And we've seen this time and time again. And the fact that the grants require feedback, and how do we do, and what actually became of it, is important. So, I support it. Not real happy with the focus to the grants, but it's a fact of reality. And we were living in a dreamland if we think that we're going to get the school district to say, well, the school support committee at Temple Terrace doesn't want us to do this. That ain't never going to happen. But we can affect, and they do affect, the educational improvements and the educational value within the schools. And I applaud the new list. I think it's long overdue, and, you know, try to get some A schools in the list. So, I think that's an important step. And I've known most all of the participants through the years, yourself included. I know I was chair for five years before I went on to bigger and better things. But it was... The school support committee was always near and dear to my heart since 1995. That's showing my age right there. I support it.
Other discussion?
I can't support it, because even though I know that the school district does not take Temple Terrace as seriously as we would like them to, I can't support this committee becoming only about grants. So, I think the grants are an important part of what this committee does to show the city's commitment to education in the city. But I can't just go to where this committee's mission is providing classroom grants. It's just, it's not enough for me. I still believe that we should be working on getting the school district to communicate with the city, even though I... Believe me, I've been active in school issues for a very long time. I ran for school board. But I still, I don't think that we should change the mission so entirely to just be a body that awards grants. That's my two cents.
Councilmember Travis?
Just to add a little bit of local flavor in my canvassing, what I've run across is that people deeply care about the schools. And they don't really have a way of affecting any change, because Temple Terrace doesn't directly influence the schools. And one thing I always mention to those people is that we have a school support committee, and if they wanted to, they could go and get involved. So, I think the school support committee really does excellent work. And I don't know if moving it in a grant direction, where people are just distributing funding, really speaks to that need or desire to be able to go out there and influence what the schools are doing and help them. So, I think keeping the school support committee as more of a volunteer effort is something that I think is important, from the perspective of wanting to have that emotional need satisfied, being able to do something on behalf of the schools.
Councilmember Chambers?
I really don't think it was the intent of the school support committee. And they're here, they can give us the yes or no to make this a grant-only committee. That's not their goal. They just look at redoing an outdated mission statement. So, I think the mission statement's the least of their thing. They wanted to get an updated list of the schools, because they do. That is the majority of what they do. But they also, every member has a school or schools they communicate with. So, they are working with the schools on other things than just grants. So...
Is it possible to separate? I have no issue with the school list.
Okay. Can I spark for discussion? First of all, thank you very much for the work that you do, all of you. I've always thought that the school support committee is one of our best-performing volunteer groups. The work that you do to screen these grants and to follow up with the individual schools to vet the particular projects, I have always thought that you did, that you do a tremendous job with that. And so, thank you all for that. I don't have any objection to this at all. And I don't think, nor would I want, the school support committee to try to become the political arm of the city to gain influence or to make the school district take us more seriously or to... I don't want citizen volunteers interacting with the school district on a political level. I don't think that's our intent. If it is, you know, this was started before I was here, so maybe that was the original intent. I don't want that. We have five elected people that are representatives of the 30,000 people that live here. That's our job. And I interact with the school district. I don't know about the rest of you, but I mean, I interact with them all the time. I just got appointed to the citizens oversight committee for the school district, by the school board. So, I interact with them on a regular basis. We, the police department, city manager, and I are bringing to you the idea of a school resource officer at Greco. That initiative began with us. It did not... That initiative did not begin with the school district. It began with us. The other things that go... I mean, I know all the school board members, if there's a deficiency at the school, do you see the beautification that happened at Temple Terrace Elementary? That didn't happen in a vacuum. There's a reason why that happened. That's not their focus. And if it is, then we have a fundamental... I have a fundamental, maybe I'm the only one that's off here. But I don't want them playing political intermediary for the city. That's not what we have citizen volunteers for. We do that.
That's... Well, that's not what I'm suggesting they do. What the committee has done in the past, which I thought was very important, is that members of the school district came and spoke directly to the committee to give them information about what was going on in the district. Not that this committee lobbied on behalf of the citizen, but it provided a forum for people who... Committee members or people that came to the meeting to interact directly with school district personnel that they might not ordinarily have access to. But I'm not asking this committee to take on a lobbying position. But I also know the resource officer at Greco, we had a resource officer at Greco, a Temple Terrace City police officer. And the school district, they are the ones that chose to go with in-house and not use a City of Temple Terrace police officer. And now, we've been asking the whole time to get that police officer back. And now, they finally have agreed to that. But I'm not suggesting that... I mean, I talk to school board members and give them... I mean, obviously, I've voiced my opinion. But I just believe that there's more opportunity for the public to interact with a school district member on an informational basis if we keep... And to me, the mission statement is very specific that their focus is going to be on awarding grants. That's all.
Okay. Well, we've all had a chance to speak during discussion. So, is there... All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Three-two vote, first time in modern history on a school support committee. Okay. Next item is a resolution approving the final site plan for property located at 6,009 White Way Drive. Deputy Director of Community Development, Marissa Robinson, is here to explain. Good evening, Ms. Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This presentation is for the consideration of the approval of Site Plan 2501 at 6009 White Way Drive. Locally, this is referred to as the White Way Water Treatment Facility. This is the aerial view of the subject property and the surrounding areas located on White Way Drive. The property is adjacent to single-family residential zoning to the northeast and west, and to a church facility at the south. The property is 4.5 acres in size. Council, as you are aware, the city identified the need to expand the facility for administrative building use using ARPA funds. To prepare for this, the city contracted with Bandis Construction and also changed the property's zoning from residential to public quasi-public. This is the overall site plan for the project. DRC and the planning commission staff have recommended approval. The building is located at the north end of the property, between the existing wall and White Way Drive. The stormwater retention is proposed to be vaulted under the north parking lot, which is indicated in the shaded area that is light blue. This is the elevation of the proposed structure, starting with the west at the top, and then south, east, and north, moving down. This is the larger image of the north elevation. It is designed in the Mediterranean Revival style to match some of our existing city facilities. Some of the features include a tower entrance and an arcade that wraps around to the east side of the building. Here are the renderings that were submitted to the Community Development Department. These are the proposed conditions. There are six conditions with this approval. These are standard conditions regarding the date stamp of some of the drawings and elevations, and standard land development code language. and standard land development code language. They will be submitting a signed package at the time of permitting. Number four is just a correction to the plans regarding the fence detail. Number five is just the standard site plan expiration date. And six is standard language invoking the LDC when details are not specified. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Do you have any councilmember questions? Vice Mayor Schistler.
Yes, you probably can't answer this, but Mr. Warrenfels. Anticipated, well, two things, anticipated turning dirt?
July. Yes, July.
Completion date? Twenty-six. Okay. And we're, that's still four months ahead of, before the, okay.
Other questions, councilmembers? Councilmember Fernandez.
So the layout, just for people that maybe don't know the change that it's going to be. So the building is going to come much closer to the street than the wall, right? So the building is going to come up closer to the street. And then to get to the facility, you would need to go through the building. Is that, or the parking is going to be out front? Just describe how.
Can, can I ask, excuse me, may I ask that the aerial be put back on the slide with the aerial? The site plan, actually, the slide with the site plan. That one. So if you'll notice here, actually, the, so the, on this slide, what you're looking at, the top would be White Way Drive. And the building is actually closer to the wall. So you see that, that square right there is basically the, the building. The parking is, there's parking out in.
The blue is, is parking?
The blue, actually, the blue is the stormwater vault. That's just showing you what's actually underground. The parking is in front, there's, there's a couple of bays of parking in the front. And there's, there's parking also on the side. Access to the actual water treatment facility is provided. There's a driveway that goes on the east side of the building. And it continues through and goes to the gate that opens up to the, into the wall and into the actual water treatment facility, which is behind the wall to the south.
Okay, so the, the actual, because right now it's screened, the, the actual production well treatment.
Continue to be that way.
Okay. So that'll continue to be screened and?
This building will be in front of that wall, so it'll screen it some more, if you will.
Right. Okay. That's it.
Other questions, councilmembers? Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the final site plan for the property located at 6009 White Way Drive.
Second motion, second. Discussion?
Yes. Do we need to add what conditions is listed?
I don't think it would hurt.
What conditions is listed?
Let me get a second to the revised, second discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, resolution is adopted. Thank you. Next, first public hearing and first reading of a resolution approving final site plan, preliminary plan, and subdivision construction plans for Folio number 037534-0000, addressed as 10024 Davis Road and Folio number 037531-5000 in adjoining unaddressed parcel. I'll open the public hearing and ask Planner Malik Hall to explain. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the public, and also staff. So as mentioned, we are here for the final site plan, subdivision construction plans, and preliminary plat for the Davis Road project. First hearing, first reading. This is an aerial of the project, location of, of course, connected to Davis Road. Two lots with approximate acreage of 6.7. So this property has been, through the timeline, annexed to City of Temple Terrace, then rezoned into a PDA plan development zoning. And now we are at the final site plan stage and also the preliminary plat and subdivision construction plan stage. There are 28 single-family lots between the two lots that will become one project and lot, ideally through the preliminary plat process. This is the site plan for the property, for the project. Once again, 28 single-family lots. There will be a privately maintained lift station also on the property. And as you can see, some onsite retention as well. And some disability parking in the front by, I believe, the mail kiosk. Here's a overlay of the site plan onto the satellite imagery for context of the land and other residential homes. The red hatching on the aerial site is just site triangles for City of Temple Terrace and for FDOT. So there are some onsite site triangles. Once you enter the roadway, the internal roadway, and then the main roadway along Davis Road, the larger hatching is the FDOT site triangle. There are two proposed signages for the project. So this, just being shown to you for context. So at the time of permitting, there will be a signed package provided with either one of those signs shown here or at least a similar sign of equivalent, I guess, aesthetics. Here's the preliminary plat for the project. So so far I've shown you the proposed final site plan. I'm now, now showing the preliminary plat. Once the preliminary plat is approved, they still must get the finals, the final plat approved within six months of the prelim. These are the proposed conditions. There are nine in total. We have some conditions to be addressed at the time of permitting. So delineated the landscape hedges around the proposed four-foot-tall opaque fence for the lift station. The lift station needs buffering. And then other conditions at the time of permitting, such as the backflow prevention assembly location. So those are the conditions for the project. And once again, this is for the final site plan, the preliminary plat, and the subdivision construction plans, first reading, first hearing. The second reading, second hearing would be to approve all of these aspects of the project.
Mr. Hall, would you bring those conditions of approval slides back up and kind of cover them a little more?
From the top?
Yeah, yeah, just cover those a little more. Because we, we've had an opportunity to look at the backup material, but nobody else has, so.
Understood. So condition one is for the final site plan of them, obviously the most current approved plan by DRC. So there's a timestamp on that and calls out that the lots will be 28 single-family residential lots. Condition two is for the subdivision signage. So as mentioned, for the two signages shown, shown, there will be a signed package submitted once it's submitted to building. So. Condition three is at time of permitting to delineate the landscape hedges around the lift station. So lift stations or any utility structure must be buffered by either, or and/or hedges in opaque fencing. So that's just buffering for the lift station so that the utility structure is screened. Condition four, provide updated plans regarding Davis Road lane width and related stormwater management design as required by the county. And of course, subject to review by the city engineer staff. Condition five, provide updated plan regarding temporary backflow prevention assembly location. A lot of these conditions are related to at the time of permitting because unlike a traditional application, this was, um, the submittals were at percentages, so 30%, 60%, 100%. So for this type of project, this is not unusual to have because it was reviewed in conjunction, almost as if, sort of as if you're reviewing the planning and zoning part of it and the building part of it at the same time. Much of what was already shown in extreme detail is what will be provided as the building permit plans. Condition six, provide update plans regarding the cover sheet and sheet C2. That's just a minor correction to some of the plans. Condition seven, provide the proposed, proposed street name on the final plat with a review fee. So the hearings are for the preliminary plat. But if the preliminary plat is approved, then the final plat must be submitted and then eventually approved by city council within six months. The submission of it needs to be within six months, but eventually it will need to be approved by city council. Condition eight, standard site plan expiration section. And then condition nine, where standards are not specifically here and mentioned, the land development code applies.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? If not, councilmembers, questions? Councilmember Travis.
Hi. Coming back to point nine, there's a reference to the land development code. And this, this is going to go a little bit into the weeds. But during goal setting, one thing we discussed was developing a townhouse zoning code. And I remember with this development, originally, I believe, and again, my memory doesn't always serve me, there were 36 units, and now it's been reduced to 28. Does that, does that ring a bell?
During the plan development approval process, there was a reduction in the number of lots. I don't remember the initial amount of lots proposed, but it, it was reduced to 28. You are correct.
Okay. Just making sure that this is the same development that I was thinking of. Thank you. And one thing I've noticed is that we tend to default into plan development when what we really want to build is townhouses. And I always think, in order to avoid a situation where we're achieving the density that we want so that people can have the quality of life that we intend for them to have in that location, it might be a good idea to move forward on that townhouse development code, that townhouse zoning code, so that we don't need to rely on plan development as much as we do. Because, correct me again if I'm wrong, plan development takes its model from commercial multifamily as the next closest development type?
Whatever development or bulk standard is closest to the proposed project is the baseline, and then you adjust and modify from there. So if it's a residential project, we use residential bulk standard. If it's a commercial project, we use a commercial bulk standard, and so on and so forth.
So this might have been single-family home then as the benchmark?
If I don't recall exactly, but being, I would assume, I would like to say that it was a combination of single-family and multifamily.
We used R7.
Yeah, we do have, thank you, we do have crafted bulk standards a part of.
This is single-family. This is not townhomes. This is single-family.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't saying it was townhomes.
Yeah. So, so thank you again for that one. So unrelated to this, then, I'm just curious, how, how, do you have an opinion about developing a townhouse zoning code?
This is, questions about this project?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not future. This is about this project.
I have no opinion.
Okay. I'm glad. Thank you.
Are there questions about the project? Councilmember Fernandez.
So I wanted to ask you about stormwater. And I know that they're going, they obviously have to provide a full stormwater retention or whatever the methodology will be used to handle the stormwater from this project. But we are in the process of doing a full stormwater analysis. And this project's not online. How, how would, but we know it's going to happen. So how would this project be incorporated into that study to make sure that we do have the full system capacity?
So the, I believe you're referring to the stormwater master plan we discussed at the budget workshop. So that's for the FY '26 budget, if the council chooses to approve it. So it would be starting, starting after October 1.
And the county's actually doing a project right now, right?
Correct. So the county has gone through, they're not, it's not a master plan per se for the county. It's just a reaction, as far as I could tell, to what happened during Milton and trying to give some recommendations. I think those are coming out the next month or so. The, this, this being the private development site, at this point, they've, I imagine, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hall, but they, they've had to put in all the required stormwater, retain everything on site. Is that correct?
Do you have onsite retention on the site plan?
Okay. So I think what our master plan is going to be focused a lot on, not necessarily the newer neighborhoods, which kind of, they adhere to the current regulations, again, retaining everything on site. It's more like the older parts of our community where we found we've had to do projects recently to, to, you know, put in additional piping and things like that where the public, the public rights away are flooded and things like that. So I think that's where the bulk of our study is going to go. It doesn't mean that there won't be neighborhoods involved. Some of the newer neighborhoods, those are the ones that, again, they're, they're ahead of the game because the regulations today are far more stringent than they would have been 20 years ago or 100 years ago, you know, when, when this, when some of these older houses were developed.
Okay. All right. Was that, that's just, my only concern is I know that we're looking at this after the hurricane, and I just want to make sure that our, what we are expecting, and I know the City of Temple Terrace isn't the only body that permits this, but that's it.
Further questions? Councilmembers, other questions? If there are no other questions, I will close the hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance, please.
A resolution of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida approving final site plan SPR 24-08, preliminary plat SP 24-03, and subdivision construction plans for a residential subdivision to be developed on property located south of East Fowler Avenue and west of Davis Road, addressed as 10024 Davis Road, totaling 6.7 plus or minus acres, subject to any conditions of approval providing for correction of typographical errors, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the final site plan, preliminary plan, and subdivision construction plans for Folio number 037534-0000, addresses 10024 Davis Road, and Folio number 037531-5000 in adjoining and address parcel on first public hearing and reading with proposed conditions.
Second.
That's a mouthful. Motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Hall. The next item is going to be pulled until the July 1 meeting. We submitted this contract, I know you just got it, that's no good. We, we submitted this contract for outside legal review, and we should have had it back long before now. We, I'm understanding we got it back like moments before the meeting started tonight. But I, I, I mean, we can do it if you guys want to. But I don't like the idea of last-minute changes and we're voting in a contract. I haven't even seen the markups, and neither has anybody. So I'd like to pull it until July 1, now that we have the legal review in. That's all right with everybody, so. Next item then becomes a resolution authorizing the use of a piggyback agreement between the City of Daytona Beach and Mechanical Services of Central Florida for HVAC maintenance, control services, and total equipment replacement. And we have our Director of Public Works, Jason Warrenfels, here to explain. Good evening again.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present for consideration a resolution authorizing the City of Temple Terrace to utilize a piggyback agreement for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC services. This agreement leverages an existing competively bid contract between the City of Daytona Beach and Mechanical Services of Central Florida, Incorporated Contract Number 2420MSCF. This resolution allows for our city to benefit from favorable pricing in terms that have already been competively procured and vetted, saving both time and administrative resources typically required for a standalone procurement. Under this agreement, the contractor, Mechanical Services of Central Florida, will provide full suite of HVAC-related services, including routine and emergency maintenance system controls and complete equipment replacement when needed. Compensation and payment terms are defined under Section 3 of the Daytona Beach Contract and its Exhibit B pricing proposal. These terms will directly apply to our use of the agreement, ensuring cost transparency and consistency. Funding for these services will come from general fund account numbers 0011719-5193499. This resolution provides a streamlined legal, legally compliant method for the city to address HVAC needs across facilities, ensuring optimal climate control, energy efficiency, and equipment longevity. Staff recommends approval of this resolution to enhance the city's operational efficiency and facility management through the use of this piggyback agreement. I stand for this.
Thank you, Mr. Warrenfels. Are there members of the? Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? And seeing none, council members' questions? Vice Mayor Schisler?
Yeah, um, I, I can't remember all the exact details of the ABM contract, but I've know that when we entered into this contract, there was a lot of capital improvements that they made ahead of time, and we were able to pay back with rebate, not rebates, but save, cost savings and so forth. With the abandonment of the contract, um, or termination of contract to January twenty-five, have we, have we finalized all the relationships or all the um, back and forth that were required? Or are we, there's no, this is just a natural termination of, of the agreement, and we're pre-clear, and we don't have any residual issues with them? Because they, they came in and they rebuilt everything, HVAC related, on almost, almost all of our buildings. So I just wanna make sure that we don't, we don't have any exposure on the backend. I'm sure you've thought about it, but, but uh, well, we had the air conditioner on the rec center or something like that, that we still owe a little bit of money on.
So the, the ABM agreement reached its full term, and ABM chose not to renew and continue with that agreement. Um, so that is why we are, we have sourced and found this agreement. Uh, Ron, the, the deputy director of public works has reached out to multiple agencies, had interviews, had conversations, and this was the one that best met our needs for what we're doing.
That, that's good.
Other questions, council members? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Warrenfeld, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the use of a piggyback agreement between the city of Daytona Beach and Mechanical Services of Central Florida for HVAC maintenance, control services, and total equipment replacement.
Second.
He's got it.
Council member Chambers, second. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, sir. Council business, carryover council business. Council member Travis?
Uh, I do have a new item. Do you only want carryover right now?
Well, yeah, well, about new business, I'll call you first for new business. Anything um, under council business? Okay, new business, council member Travis?
Um, I really like the ideas relating to uh, using the adopt a tree fund a little bit more extensively. I know we lost about fifteen thousand trees in the previous hurricane season. Many people are concerned about the state of trees in terms of their maintenance. So I think there's two topical areas that are really pressing. One of them is, people see the trees, they notice that they're not in great condition, they're concerned about them. I'm talking about mostly trees in the public right-of-ways. And the other issue is that many trees have been removed because they fell ill or they were blown over during the hurricane, and so we've actually lost a fair number. And as was pointed out earlier, um, as you've so eloquently noted, we've planted about five hundred of them. Um, and so the, the adopt a tree program is putting a little dent in it, but we have one point two million dollars in it right now. Um, and the, the need for replacing these other fourteen thousand five hundred trees that we've lost is still there. So what I'm observing is, there's a desire for trees, but maybe people don't necessarily want them on their own property, which is in many ways reasonable now because of the insurance issues that so many companies are causing. Um, and we're also not planting trees at a rate that's sufficient to replace the losses that we've been having. And people do love Temple Terrace because of the trees. They come here, they love the, the environment, they love the ambiance, and the trees are a really big part of that. And uh, so I've, I've been talking to a lot of people lately, and they, they like the idea of putting trees in public spaces, because obviously it's less trouble for them as private households. And so I thought, where's the biggest public place that we might make use of? And the golf course is quite large, and there's a section of the golf course that isn't really of relevance to the golfers that much, which is the rough. So this is the area between the fairway and the street. And so I reached out to Marcy Bork, general manager, and asked her what she might think about that. She really liked the idea, she took it to her board, the board liked the idea. So it's been a very interesting discussion. They said, if they planted the trees in the rough, there are a lot of locations that they've got where they could put a tree, and then it would also be caught by the irrigation. So the landscape office at the golf course knows where the sprinklers are able to hit, where they're not, and also where they might be able to extend the irrigation systems uh, without they're getting too much trouble. So what I'd like to propose is that, I mean, maybe extend an olive branch to the golf course and see if they'd be willing to accept donated mature trees. I'd like to see maybe a little bit larger trees than we typically plant, because we have so much money, and you can get a very nice fifteen to twenty-year-old tree for about a thousand dollars. Uh, and we could see if the golf course would be willing to work with us to install these trees in the course. Not in the course, excuse me, in, in the rough.
Right down the center.
Terminology, um, very important. So that's what I'd like to, to propose, and I'd like to see if anyone else is interested in pursuing that kind of an avenue. I think the city manager could reach out to them and maybe talk to them and see what they would like to offer us in terms of planting locations, what kind of trees they'd like to have there, and then we could go from there, and maybe get a few more trees put Another one of my radical ideas.
Mayor?
Yeah, I don't think it's a radical idea. I know where you're going, goal setting, we talked about uh, trees on the golf course. So what you're proposing is nothing new at all in the Brian McCaffrey, uh, Ryan McCaffrey with the club years ago, when he was on the board, worked with uh, our arborist and our city staff to develop a, a plan for these trees. So there, there's a plan out there. Uh, I know, me personally, as a golfer, uh, and I wouldn't be opposed down the middle of the fairway, it's safe for me, but um, those golfers that know. But um, we, we have the tree study going. I know it, our tree study doesn't include the golf course. I, I would like, me personally, I would like to see the results of the tree study, to know how much money of our tree fund we're gonna spend on other parts before we start spending on more expensive trees, the more mature trees. So I think we have a plan in place, I mean, the, the, you know, no one's gonna argue against trees in our city. We are Tree City USA. I just don't know what we have to do tonight to make that change our, our, what we're planning to do anyway. So let's just...
I appreciate the statement.
Council member Fernandez?
I mean, I, I completely agree, and that's my hope, is that coming out of the tree study that we're doing, we do come up with some sort of plan, not just for the golf course, rough, which obviously noticeably lost a lot of trees, but also our public parks have some very old, large trees, they may have lost some, that sort of thing. So I, I'd like us to, I think we're doing this as part of our tree study, um, looking at all of the, of the public space, or possibly the right-of-way space where we can re-tree.
That's correct. Well, we're not looking at the golf courses, um, council member Chambers mentioned, but we are looking at the rights of way, our park spaces, our public properties. Um, and in fact, that contract, we're hoping to bring that contract to you. Mr. Polly, would you mind coming out, giving us an update where we are with that? I know we talked about it recently.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Greg Polly, Director of Community Development. Um, with regards to the tree study, we actually have activity happening on that uh, initiative tomorrow. Uh, staff, I should not refer to them generally as staff, because it was actually the evaluation committee that was a three-person team with staff from public works, my department, and also leisure services. Staff has uh, reviewed all of the submitted proposals during the evaluation period, which ended last week. Of that, they shortlisted two finalists, and those finalists are actually coming in for an in-person interview with the evaluation committee, starting tomorrow morning. So by the end of tomorrow, the evaluation committee will be prepared to make a recommendation on who they would like to advance uh, for an award. Now, uh, prior to that happening, there will be a um, contract period that will obviously involve our legal department working with these firms and um, preparing uh, materials for this council to review. And I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date, uh, but I wanna say it's due back before you in the, at the contract approval level in August. But I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on that. I'm trying to remember the dates.
Thank you, Mr. Polly. So I, you know, city manager and I meet monthly with the president and vice president of the club. We just had, well, city manager, BE, was called on site to Fowler Avenue, so he missed the last meeting, but I just met with them. Um, I mean, there's no barrier to us using the tree fund to plant trees on golf course property, as long as it's in a place that's mutually agreeable. There, there's never been. They have planted trees. This isn't like a brand-new thing that nobody's thought of. We've done this. They planted pine trees out there with, so what he did tell me, the president, Dan Kapaz, told me, was, um, he reminded me of the contract that the irrigation system, so let me give, you guys are new to the city, let me give you a little context. Five, was it James, five, six years ago? Five or six years ago, the country club redid the irrigation system. It was a half a million dollar project. The city invested some money into it, because it is our property. The biggest donor, not donor, but the biggest funder of that project was Swift Mud, Southwest Florida Water Management District. They're the ones that permit the wells that they use to pump water onto the golf course. They use well water, they don't use ci- city water. Their wells are permitted to draw a certain number of hundred gallons a day out of the ground. In order for Swift Mud to agree to pony up, I wanna say they ponied up about half of it, but don't hold me to that. I think it was about a quarter million dollars they ponied up. But in one of the stipulations, to do that was that they had to reduce water consumption by X number of gallons a week or a month or whatever. I, at the time, I could have told you what this, three thousand gallons a month or whatever, but it's been a while, so I'd have to go back and look up the numbers. But they're contractually obligated to reduce their water consumption, or they have to pay a quarter of a million dollars back to Swift Mud. So Swift Mud monitors the amount of water that they use for irrigation. So the president told me, look, I'm happy to plant trees as long as it doesn't obstruct play, or it's not gonna grow into a tree that obstructs play. If you wanna find a spot that's bare and you wanna plant a tree, if it's out of the way, that's fine, but we can't water it, because we can't use any more water than what we're using. And so if you plant a tree out of the tree fund, have at it, it's your property, but you're gonna have to water it, because we can't water it. And so that's the reason why we haven't really gone out there and looked for spots to plant trees, because now we've got Mr. Warrenfeld's going out and getting a water truck to figure out how to send somebody by there to water the tree every day, because these big trees take, what, how many gallons a day? Fifty gallons a day or something?
A gallon of water for every caliber inch.
Right. And they're much more than a thousand dollars, by the way. They're like ten thousand dollars, aren't they, for an eight-inch tree?
Correct, I read it, no problem. Hand ready's off. Four gallons of water, sorry, for every caliber inch, it's four gallons.
Four gallons for every inch. So the, the barrier's not that, we do, you're right, we have money in the tree fund. If you have a place that you, like, you're out walking your dog, and you see a place in a city park, like, gotta be a beautiful place, we'll put a tree. But it's gotta be somewhere where it can be watered, and we're not gonna buy a water truck and go around the golf course watering. I mean, we don't have the staff for that. So the barrier is the water. Um, and that's why they can't water the tree, so. But we do have money in the tree fund, that's correct, and we're happy to plant trees. So yes, council member?
I'm just happy to hear the, the principled encouragement to the idea. Um, I can personally vouch for Tree Mart being willing to sell about a fifteen tall oak, fifteen-foot tall oak tree for a little bit over a thousand dollars. Uh, I mean, one would have to probably look through the market and see which uh, best offer's available. Um, and, and in, in difference to what might have been the discussion previously with the golf course, I was massively encouraged by uh, what I heard from them, including from Mr. Dickerson there, and um, they, they were all very interested in the idea. And I think if we could reach a cooperative arrangement with them, where we're both working on the irrigation issue, where we're both talking about what tree goes where, and then we're contributing the tree, and maybe some of the planting, and then they maybe help with the irrigation. If there is this willingness, and it certainly seems like there is on the part of the golf course, uh, then we could make progress on some of those thorny issues that you just pointed out.
No, there's not a willingness. They don't, can't, they will not water the trees.
I personally heard differently from the people who are in charge within the last couple of weeks.
He's gone.
Okay.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, um, the, this is, this is not a new project. We've been talking about this for many, many years now. Um, the, uh, but it, it's a good project, it's one that's important to us. We modified the uh, tree ord- the tree fund ordinance four years ago, five years ago, to help the golf course, where we could actually put trees on the golf course, and we actually helped take them down. I don't believe we're allowed to plant them with those funds. That, that I...
Here we are.
We have, with that, okay, we declared for that. Okay, but the watering, a- and still, um, at this point, city staff to do that, uh, they still had, I'm sorry, I'm about to backtrack. The golf course took down, not quite a thousand trees, or it was, it was a ton of trees way back then. They haven't replaced all of those at that point, because they gotta plant them, and again, they gotta water them. Um, and the, the, the numbers, you're right, the numbers on the uh, the tri-party agreement, because we were all involved with that, uh, you know, city put up almost a half a million dollars for it, and the, and the, the club put up a bunch, and Swift Mud did a quarter of a million. And if they go over that quota, they gotta pay that quarter million dollars back, and they don't have that kind of fund. So it's, it's very, very tenuous, and there's times the golf course can just barely cover the gre- the, the fairways and so forth. So, uh, you know, we're all, we've always been in agreement with doing this, it's just a, a matter of time, money for the, the, the other projects, I mean, this, this, we gotta, there's many, 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 many projects going on by all, all the departments within the city. And uh, we're all in agreement, we lost a ton of trees, but that's, that's a force majeure, and that's, there's not much we really could do about that. And I, 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 they're in the plan again for this year, um, getting as many trees as we possibly can put in, but I think that there's some bigger priorities that we have to take care of, um, with stormwater uh, projects and so forth to, to, to cover it. But uh, not, not taking it lightly, we understand, we agree, we're all up here, we, we love the tree uh, analysis that they're going to do through, through USF, or, or what they're, they propose, and I can't remember, was it LIBORG or something? I can't remember what it was exactly, but, the acronym for it, but uh, it'll happen. It'll happen. It's just, just gonna take time.
Okay, are we still on this, or is there other new business? Council member?
I just, uh, two points in that motion. So I have got, uh, first of all, uh, when it comes to installing the trees, I don't think it would be a huge burden on staff, given that most tree nurseries will also offer installation, so it could be subcontracted out, and it wouldn't be an issue. Uh, so, that being said, um, you're free to support or, or not support, whatever you choose, but I, I'd like, just as a general sort of overview, I think, including the golf course into the tree plan that we're developing, which it isn't right now, is a really good idea. So I think we should reach out to them. So I, I'd like to motion to instruct the city manager to explore a plan to plant ten-to-twenty year-old mature trees, paid for from the adopt a tree fund, in the rough, between the fairway and street, around Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club, in cooperation with the same. Very often intended, just to reach out to them, to explore whether there are possibilities for planting these trees there and irrigating them. Nothing definitive, no targets, no specific goals, no specific funding requirements, just to see whether there is some common ground that we can use.
Can you restate the motion?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's to instruct the city manager to explore a plan to plant ten-to-twenty year-old mature trees, paid for from the adopt a tree fund, in the rough, between the fairway and street, around the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club, in cooperation with the same.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, no second motion dice.
All right, thank you.
Is there other new business or board reports? Council member?
I have two board reports. Uh, so they're, they're similar, but they're different. So, um, the first is the Cultural Assets Commission, which is a Hillsborough County appointed board that provides grants for special event partnerships. So, um, if you're thinking about a cultural event in the community, you could apply for this grant. And the grant cycle opened June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it will close July eleventh, twenty twenty-five. So any organization, or if you're part of an organization that you know you're doing an event that would take place between October first, twenty twenty-five, and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, I encourage you to go on Hillsborough County's website and apply for the Cultural Arts Special Event Partnership Grant. And they're only going to have one grant cycle uh, in the upcoming fiscal year, which is a change from the past. So, um, if you have an event, know that you... So if you have an event, know that you get one grant cycle. The second item is Hillsborough County Arts Council, and that also offers grants. And they are going to have, their, their next grant is Professional Development for Artists Grant. And that application opens on July 7th and closes on July 25th of this year. So again, that's, I encourage anybody who is interested in developing artists to go on Hillsborough County's website and see if that's a grant that you or somebody you know should apply for. And that's it.
Thank you. Other new business or board reports? City Manager, you going to talk about the state budget? If you're not, I'll bring it up.
I was, well, you can, you can do it there.
Okay. All right. New business, Councilmembers? We are, we were included in the final state budget that was voted on and approved by the Senate in the House yesterday. For half the amount, we put in for $884,000, if I remember correctly. We were reduced in the House to $442,000 for, this is for hurricane relief stuff, fuel trucks, a sandbag machine. We momentarily got restored to $884,000 for the full amount, but the Senate refused to go to that amount. So we lost that momentary optimism, and we slid back to $442,000, but the Senate did go for that, met the House on that. So we did make the final budget. Now, don't throw the party yet, because we still have to survive the veto process, so we'll see how that goes. But anyway, fingers crossed, we are in the state budget for half of our request. So $442,000, and what we'll do pending council's approval with that is buy the most essential things off of that list, would be fuel trucks and a sandbag machine. So of course, that's pending everybody's approval.
And getting through the line of.
And getting through the, the line of.
Did that cover it?
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Did that cover the fuel truck and the, the, the sandbag machine?
It would cover the fuel tanks. Yeah, we're going to go with the trailer probably, but I'll let City Manager tell you, so the trailers last longer than the trucks, but.
Am I going to get the balloon tires? Sorry, Jason.
Yeah. Okay. City Managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So since it's now June, we are in hurricane season, as everybody knows. We talked a little bit about some of the damaging effects of the hurricanes for trees and sanitary sewer lines. Want to talk about some of the great things that our marketing and communications team is doing in terms of improving our hurricane communications, so that they have, I'm going to ask Maria and Mary to come up. They have a short presentation to show you and the rest of the community as to some of the innovations that we're looking at, to ensure that our residents stay well-informed.
Ladies, I've seen a lot of you today.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. The presentation today, it's going to be short and sweet, very straightforward. So as, oh. As City Manager mentioned, these are the ways, the different ways that we are going to be communicating with residents before, during, and post-hurricane season. So we're going to start with Clerk Chat. This is our new text system that we recently launched. Okay, we haven't fully launched it. We are presenting it here today. And it's pretty straightforward. It's easy to use. This is how residents are going to be able to sign up to receive text alert from the city during hurricane season. And we can also use this text alert system throughout the year as well. One of the ways that residents can find the information to sign up for this text alert is if they go on our homepage, they will be able to see different ways to sign up for, well, they will see how, the first button is for residents to sign up for this text alert. But they can also download the app, which I'll be talking about that in a few moments. And as you can see, all the ways that they can communicate with the city. This page has more information about the hurricane, the hurricane season. And at the top of the page, you can see, the, the first thing that you will see is obviously another way to sign up for this text alert. On our website, as I, I forgot to mention this earlier, but our motto this year is we are meeting residents where they are and where they go. Basically, last year, I was able, when I first started working for the city, I was able to review the analytics for the website, and I saw that last year we had over 200,000 visits to the website. Just between October 6th and the 12, and 12th, October 6th and 12th, we had, I believe, 54,000 active visitors on the website, looking for hurricane information. So we do have a lot of traffic going to our website, and so we are planning to utilize our website in different ways. So these are three different ways that we are going to be utilizing our website during hurricane season. We have new flashes, which I'm going to show you here in a moment what those look like. We have alert media banners, and we have pop-up notifications. So these are news flashes. This is, we recently launched this. It's available on the homepage. Basically, are short articles where residents can find more information about everything that is going on in the city. These are the pop-up notifications. This is what they usually look like if you're visiting our website on a computer versus a mobile phone. And as you can see, this is pretty effective when getting the word out about emergencies, because this is the first thing residents see when they visit our website. It pops up. It has the ability to show on all the pages of the website, but currently we're using it on the homepage. Next, we have the alert media banner. That's another way for residents to get notifications on what's going on in the city, if we have a pipe break or road closures and things like that. And again, ways to, how it shows on the website, you know, on a computer versus a mobile phone.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Mary Bates, Marketing and Communication Specialist. So we received a lot of good kudos for our social media presence last year, and that's something that we want to continue to move forward with. So I'm going to talk a little bit about pre-storm content and post-storm content that we want to utilize this year. So for pre-storm content, as you can see on the left, we have some graphics that are pretty easy to put out. For instance, we could say to residents what category storm it is, as well as helpful information lines. And then we also have some videos with one of our officers and our 911 supervisor, Amy. This year, we want to start pre-filming content and have it so we're able to put it out during the hurricane, so we're not scrambling last minute. We just want the public to get that personal feel from officials in our city. So we're working on coordinating that as well. And then finally, we have our Facebook geofencing system that we actually learned about in our recent social media conference that we went to. And it's a really great tool. In order to use it, you just make a normal Facebook post. You hit the local alert button, and it goes, it sends an alert out to everyone in the boundary of Temple Terrace, even if you do not follow the city of Temple Terrace. If they have notifications on, it will go to them, or if they don't have notifications on, it'll stay at the top of their feed for up to 24 hours. So I think that's really good real estate for our city to use in times of emergency. And as far as post-storm content, we filmed a lot of videos daily with our mayor, and the public seemed to really like that. I also took a transcript from everything that he said, and residents liked to read it over. They enjoyed that as well. So we plan on doing that again, if Mr. Mayor would like to. We also want to utilize live video creation. We have Instagram Live and Facebook Live. If we have really pressing matters that we want to get out quick, we can use those, and we have a pretty good social media following that can tune in. And then finally, we have our post-storm content, where we want to inform residents about where they can get help. For instance, we had the comfort stations at Lightfoot Center and the library, and we had set up the pod stations as well. So we want to make sure that residents are available of those as well.
And finally, one of the post-hurricane efforts, it's our recently-launched app. It's the Temple Terrace In Touch app. This, as you can see here in this screenshot, it, it's, this app is for residents to report any issues in the city. So this is going to come very handy post-hurricane season, so they can report any debris, garbage, if there is a pothole, if there is any damage around their homes or in the community. They can report those issues utilizing the new Temple Terrace In Touch app. And as you can see, we are already utilizing the home screen of this app to promote things like sign up for text messages. And we can actually add any other call-to-action to this app. We are also going to be utilizing our digital displays. We have, we have several throughout the city. We will be obviously updating this as needed throughout the hurricane season. And lastly, we have our voicemail system. For those who are not connected on social media, who are not going to our website, we have this phone number available, where we are going to be recording updates as needed as well. One thing I wanted to mention is, that I forgot to mention when I was talking about Clerk Chat, residents who have signed up through our website to receive text message notifications, they will be automatically signed up to this new text alert system. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember's questions. Councilmember Fernandez.
So I see that on the Temple Terrace In Touch, if you, if you have that app installed, it does have a thing to sign up for the Temple Terrace text updates. But if you don't have this app, where would somebody go? They're not signed up for any text already, so where would they go to sign up?
For the text alert?
For the text.
It's on the homepage.
So is this?
Homepage.
That's the homepage of our website?
Yes.
Okay, that's, because that doesn't look like what it looks like when I open the homepage.
Yes.
If you scroll down.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's.
These are all new changes.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, so that if somebody was looking for it, they know where to go.
Yes, and if they have, and if they need information, can you back up? That, if they're looking for information about the hurricane, they can also find that link in there, in that page.
City Manager, do you have something?
No, I was just going to say what she just.
Oh, okay. Council Vice Mayor.
Would it be possible to link it to the geofencing alerts? Could you, or would it be violating some geofencing rules and so forth?
What do you mean?
Alert, telling everybody how to, how to, how to do this, how to get on to the, to the, the, um, alert on the phone.
Yeah, so let me help you out. So we, Dispatch, 911 Dispatch has another, a system called Everbridge, which is for public safety emergencies only.
Right, right.
Like Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts, those kinds of things. That's forced out, whether you're subscribed or not, to every cell phone within a geofence.
Right.
You can't do that with these. This is a subscriber-based system. There's state laws that dictate what can be forced out and what can't.
Okay.
These types of alerts can't be forced out with, to all cell phones. In other words, an Amber Alert comes out, everybody in here is going to get an alert.
Right.
We can't do that for, you know, River Hills is closed. You know, we can't do that.
To invite them to.
Yeah. No, this, this is, yeah, we, yeah, no, that's.
These systems are very limited.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes, very limited to the amount of text messages that you send out. This new text alert system, unlimited subscribers, unlimited text messages. Obviously, we're not going to be sending out text messages, just when needed.
Thank you. Good job.
Questions? Thank you very much. You guys are a small but mighty team. And so for those of you who don't know, the third member of our team is in the video booth. You don't often get to see Brian, but this, these are three very busy people, so thank you for everything. City Managers report. We're still on you.
I don't have anything else.
That's it? Okay, very good. City Attorneys report.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay. Council, anything to come before the council before we adjourn? Directors, you just want out of here, I know you. All right. Okay, very good. We'll stand adjourned.